Good evening, good evening, good evening. Dr. Benitez will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Raise your right hand over your heart. Ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. We welcome those who are here for purposes of addressing the Board at the proper time and in the order of their request. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms in the back of the room and also have additional copies here in the front at the Assistant Secretary's position. If you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. You may also make a request to give testimony on an item not listed for discussion today. However, a full discussion on any items not listed on the agenda will have to be delayed until such a time as the item can be publicly posted in advance as a regular agenda item. If you wish to ask questions, please address them to the Chair and not to individual members of the Board or to the staff. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's closed session agenda and wishes to report that no reportable actions were taken. Public hearing, there is none. Call for agenda items for separate action adoption, the agenda is posted.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the motion is approved unanimously. Approval of minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the motion is approved unanimously. We are now at Communications. National Board Certified Teachers, call up Jennifer Crockett.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Steinhauser and executive staff. National Board Certification is one of the most respected professional certificates available in education and provides numerous benefits to teachers, students and schools. The National Board Certification process is designed to develop, retain and recognize accomplished teachers in schools nationwide. Standards for each content area and developmental level are created by teachers for teachers. They represent a consensus among educators about what accomplished and effective teachers should know and be able to do to improve student learning and achievement. Board Certification is available in 25 certificate areas from pre-K through 12th grade. The Long Beach Unified School District provides financial incentives to the 173 board certified teachers in the district, up to 10% of the teacher's base salary. In support of this certification process, the district also pays the application fees and provides professional development and support to candidates. The 31 National Board teachers we are acknowledging today are responsible for providing numerous hours outside of their duty day to again benefit the teachers and students of Long Beach Unified. The 31 teachers are providing close to 145 hours of guidance to student teachers and district teachers. They are giving back and providing over 160 hours to pre-candites, candidates and renewal candidates in the National Board program. They are providing close to 240 hours of professional learning and curriculum development to their sites and to the district. And this one I'm most proud of because this again is only 31 teachers. They are providing over 1,040 hours of student support aimed at closing the achievement gap. I asked these National Board teachers how they felt about earning or renewing their certificate and they responded by saying, "I feel that it recognizes all of the work that I do for our students. I'm now better equipped to support a diverse population of learners and mentor teachers new to the profession. It strengthens my identity as a professional educator and validates my efforts as a teacher. This certificate is a direct reflection of my teaching and my hard work with students. This process has made me a better teacher and advocate for my students. I'm proud to renew my National Board certificate because it provides me with the opportunities to challenge myself. Renewing demonstrates my continuing dedication to the education profession and helps ensure students are getting the best education possible." And this one is for all of you. I am thankful that Long Beach Unified encourages and supports teachers throughout the certification process. Without that support, I would not have been able to complete the process. In honor of earning this achievement, I would like to start off by recognizing the brand new National Board Certified teachers this year by reading their names and having them join me at the podium if they are in attendance with us tonight. Nushy Baron, Jennifer Baragin, Brona Byrne, Shadi Gavimi, Stacy Hess-Petersen, Lee Huesman, Josiah Jones, Vanessa Kenley, Jennifer Nolan, Richard Ross, Adara Ryan, Leslie Theobald, Bryant Ton and Ann Yoon. Let's give them a large round of applause. The National Board Renewal Process is not simply a recertification process. The National Board Certified Teachers must compile and submit a profile of professional growth demonstrating how their practices continue to align with the five core propositions in their certificate area. In contrast to initial certification, the profile of professional growth is a single submission composed of three interrelated components and a reflection. These components draw upon a single group of professional growth experiences. In honor of earning this achievement, I would like to recognize the National Board Renewal teachers for this year again by reading their name and having them join me at the podium if they are in attendance with us tonight. Lindsay Bobo, Alicia Caramona, Jessica Cohen, Yolanda Darrington, Anthony Dow, Stephanie Ewig-Warner, Lisa Hickman, Dallas Law, Jamie Nichols, Maya Oliver, Danielle Sawyer, Laura Strand, Miki Smith, Alan Vandervort, Henry Waddles, Julian Waldenfels and Jason Wilson. Let's also give them a round of applause. Thank you so much to the Board, Mr. Steinhauser and the executive staff for allowing us to take some of your time to celebrate these wonderful teachers tonight.
To all of our teachers that have been recognized tonight, what a, what a great honor it is to, to have you all come and, and what, in particular, the time that you go through to become nationally recognized, but also the impact that it has to Long Beach Unified School District. We are also very proud of you. And all of you may want to go out and celebrate now, or you may want to stay with us for the rest of the day, so. Thank you all very much and again, congratulations to each and every one of you. Okay, we will now move right into the report by the Citizens Oversight Committee. Measure E and Measure K, Walter Larkins.
Good evening, Board, appreciated, and Chris Steinhauser and staff and all the people here in, in attendance. I'm going to read this so I don't miss anything important. "The Citizens Oversight Committee is proud to present this, our 11th annual report to the community detailing a record-setting year for the Long Beach Unified School District. During fiscal year 2018 and 19, more construction and modernization projects were in progress or completed than in any other single year in the history of the district. There were 78 projects in planning, in construction or completed in this 12-month period, including building new classroom facilities, heating and air conditioning systems and athletic field improvements. As we continue to address unmet needs, every school in the district has benefited in one way or another from the school bond, whether it's additional security fencing, new clocks and alarms, or campus-wide Wi-Fi. All 72,000 USD students in all 75 campuses, 85 campuses enjoy an improved learning environment thanks to Measures K and E. The facility teams deserves credit for the hard work and long hours that have made this progress possible. We, as members of the Soto Citizen Oversight Committee, get a front row seat and view as we tour projects coming to fruition. We also regularly review and monitor expenditures for these projects, which require meticulous record-keeping and continuous budget balancing. In December of 2019, the district independent audit of Clifton Larson &amp; Allen LLP presented the completed annual performance and financial audit of Measure E and K Bond Program, which had no findings for financial accountability and performance. That is why we are so impressed that for the seventh year straight, an outside audit firm, after thoroughly investigating the bond program and records, was given the distinct, the district, the highest rating. To the best of our knowledge, the district is in compliance with Article 13A, Section 1B3 of the California Constitution in regards to the appropriate use and spending of bond proceeds. It has been an honor and privilege for me to witness firsthand the significant progress we are making forward towards transforming our schools to the 21st century learning environments." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Walter. Thank you very much. Our Student Rep is here, Anais Gomez from CAMHS. Welcome and thank you for joining us. We are now at Staff Report, there is none.
Sorry, we're number 19, public testimony and items listed on the agenda.
My apologies. Public testimony and items listed on the agenda, I do not have any requests. Staff Report, none. Public testimony and items not listed, I do have some requests. Call it on Robert Collins.
Y'all give me a second to put on my glasses. Good evening. I know that many parents come to complain and tonight I'm going to complain, but first I'd like to thank the Board for everything you do for kids. I understand that the Board deals with policy, but tonight I'd like you to get down in the weeds with me because my 12-year-old son has experienced bullying and sexual harassment in LBUSD. Last year, a student told kids not to be his friend because he has gay parents. This year at Tenure, he has heard about 15 homophobic and racial slurs. Thank you, Board Members. My husband and I worked hard with the principal to change this and teachers were supportive.
Sir, could you just go back and repeat what you just read?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you mind if, should I just start again?
Go ahead.
Can I get the, the time back?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you guys. I just heard, saw people talking, so it threw me off.
Yeah, we, we missed some of what you said too, so that's why we're asking.
Oh, and is, is this okay right here? You can hear me?
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. So I'd like you to get down in the weeds with me because my 12-year-old son has experienced bullying and sexual harassment in LBUSD. Last year, a student told kids not to be his friend because he has gay parents. This year at Tenure, he has heard about 15 homophobic and racial slurs. My husband and I worked hard with the principal to change this and teachers were supportive. A few months ago, a small group of boys approached my son at school and asked if he was gay and then I asked him the size of his P-word vagina. Through the Chair, I'd like to ask Board Members if any of you have been asked the size of your P-word vagina at lunch. My son does not identify as gay, but the school and district office took this seriously and it was handled appropriately. Recently, my son and his friend were targeted with direct messages from an Instagram account using a Rogers Schools, Rogers Middle School name and the Rogers logo with student pictures posted on this account. People were asked to comment on student relationships. The direct messages referenced oral sex and sexual orientation. I gave the Rogers principal pictures of four students that were posted. He conducted an investigation, but stated he could only identify one student at Rogers. This did not make sense to me. I followed up with DO, but again, they stressed that he could only identify one student at Rogers. My son texted a friend and she gave him the names of all the students in the pictures and reportedly, they all go to Rogers. His friend also gave him the name of the person who owned the account and a witness. I emailed Rogers principal all this information on Tuesday 2/11, thinking the problem might be solved and a conversation could be had with the person who sent the vulgar homophobic bullying text messages. I thought the principal would respond with something like, "Thanks for this information. We will investigate," with maybe a, "Oops, I messed up. The four students do go to Rogers." On Thursday 2/13, he wrote, "At this point, I do not have any new information." I had given him new information on 2/11, two days earlier. In his response, he didn't mention that I emailed him that my son's friend identified all four students in the pictures, the owner of the account and a witness. I was confused. I asked him to call me, but he never did. District Office is now taking over the investigation. Maybe it's time to analyze how we deal with the sexual harassment of our students.
Thank you. Before I introduce the next speaker, I understand we have some members of the Citizens Oversight Committee here. Are they all gone? Lan Nguyen?
No, I think we have one more member of the Oversight Committee that's here in attendance.
Well, let's get this straight away. Do we have a member of the Oversight Committee here? Please, please stand.
We do.
All right.
Hi.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, you watch your company, polish yourself.
All right. Just your name.
I'm Karshay Chess and I'm, represent the parent and PTA on the Citizen Oversight Committee.
Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you much.
Thank you.
All right.
Hello, my name is Lan Nguyen and I am an alum of Long Beach Polytechnic High School. I also teach ethnic studies at Long Beach Polytechnic High School. And I am here to speak with you today about the students' allegation of racism and abuse at Long Beach Poly. In a little bit, I'm going to deliver you a petition of over 137 alumni who condemn this behavior. Since the printing of this petition, we have received additional signatures. We're at 150 right now. We're contacting you today regarding the behavior of Libby Huff, a professor at Poly who has caused immense harm to our students. Collectively, we are parents, teachers, doctors, lawyers and community members who care and give back to the Poly community. We send our kids to Poly. We still wear green and gold swag. You can find us at football games chanting, "Once a Jackrabbit, always a Jackrabbit." And we support the current students at Poly and do not stand for racism and physical abuse toward students. After reading the testimonies of multiple students against Libby Huff, we are calling on you to terminate Ms. Huff's employment at Poly High School and to contact the California Commission on Teacher Credentialing with recommendations to revoke Ms. Huff's teaching credential so that no more students will suffer abuse from Ms. Huff. It is disgraceful that a school that receives national recognition for our sports, academics and ethnic diversity would fail to protect its students from racism and physical abuse. Multiple have students, multiple students have testified that Ms. Huff called a student "the N-word" and many students have reported Ms. Huff physically touching and hurting students. As a teacher myself at Long Beach Poly, I know that when students need to be disciplined, there's no need to call them the N-word, no need to call them names, no need to physically touch them. Long Beach Poly High School is 89% students of color. As people of color, students already face racism, discrimination and violence due to their appearance outside of school. POC students must live in fear of being profiled by law enforcement, being targeted for hate crimes and being barred from opportunities due to stereotypes. They should not have to carry that fear in the classroom. Studies have shown that students in classrooms where teachers carry racial bias have more trouble achieving academic success. If, if a teacher calls a student the N-word, do you think she has racial bias? Do you think her students will succeed in class? There's no surprise here. If students do not have teachers who respect them, view them as intelligent and challenge them, then how will they have the tools they need to succeed? As alumni in support of students in Ms. Huff's classroom, we demand the following. Terminate Ms. Huff's employment at Long Beach Poly. Contact the California on Teacher Credentialing with details about the students' testimonies. Hire more teachers of color. And lastly, from this petition, we have gathered that there are other teachers at Poly who have similar experiences and allegations. We recommend that you mandate professional development trainings on racial bias and working endeavors classrooms throughout the district. And lastly, and most importantly, we ask that you believe these students. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. You can give those to the secretary right there. Thank you, Ms. Nguyen. Thank you.
Good afternoon, President and Board Members. My name is Nerik Hernandez Herrera and I'm a Junior and Student Council Vice President of Soto Academy of Math and Science. And it is my pleasure to formally invite you to our annual Elementary Engineering Day that will be, that will be taking place next Friday on February 28th. On that day, students from Soto Academy, from all grades, will go to 21 elementary schools throughout, throughout the district and will give an introduction to engineering through several fun and interactive activities. Thank you and we hope to see you there.
Thank you very much.
Can you say that again one more time?
February 28th, this should be next Friday. And then if there's any more questions or any more, or if you guys are interested, I suggest you talk to the elementary schools personally.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Bear with me on this name, Thanzadar Easley.
So my name is Ton Desire and I am a former Poly student. And my career has taken me, I've worked in accounting, I've done a lot of proposal writing, I've worked for the city of Long Beach, I've worked for a couple cities. I've, I stepped into cybersecurity, I, you know, and, and this whole journey of my career changing, I, the experience that I had working in, in the business world, but also being around a lot of artists, I see the connection being there where there's a lot of power, where I can bring a lot of attention to places that need that attention. So, I'm really here to offer, I would like to leave my information, but I'm here to offer because what I have experienced is groups of people building lists of professionals that they can connect their people to. I think that is so important because there's always gaps, you know? I wanted to be mad at the system for not taking care of all of us, but I realize that I have to step up, we have to step up and really say, "What can I do?" You know, there's a lot of people who are stepping up now and I would love to offer the resources that they have to be able to connect these communities throughout the US, throughout the world really, and be able to build the resources that we are going to need to make it into the next couple decades or however long. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you. Celine Malina? Celine?
Thank you.
Celine?
Hello, President and Board, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Celine Malina. I am a Poly grad, Class of 99. I am a wife of a teacher, a public school teacher. He was a LaCo teacher of the year a few years ago with over 20 years of teaching. And I'm also a very proud product of the entire, my entire school career was Long Beach Unified. Longfellow, Hughes and Poly. And I am the parent, very proud parent of a Long Beach Unified School District student right now. And in a few years, I'm going to give you guys another one and in a few years, another one. So I'm committed, what I'm saying is I'm vested in this community. I love Long Beach Unified. I've gotten excellent education and I love Long Beach. I am the co-founder of a nonprofit organization, or rather, a community organization in Long Beach called Long Beach Breast Feeds. And I'm vested, okay? This is my city and these are my schools. So, everyone knows this, with Long Beach and with Long Beach Unified, our strength is our diversity. We should have an absolute zero tolerance policy, zero tolerance. I don't care how many good things a teacher does, they call somebody an N-word, they put a hand on a student, zero tolerance. It negates everything good that person has done. I'm talking as a parent, I'm talking as a former student and I'm talking as the, the wife of a, of a teacher. If we aren't actively fighting racism, then we are supporting it and that is a hard truth that people need to swallow. If you are not actively fighting racism, every opportunity that you see it, then you are a supporter. White supremacism doesn't have to look like white hoods. It can look like erasure from textbooks and it can look like a physically abusive teacher who uses racial slurs, who remains unpunished, protected by a union and remains in the classroom. Our kids are victims. I read comments left on the article about, about this Poly situation on a Long Beach Post Facebook page. The comments were appalling, saying, "These kids probably deserved it." And, "Have you seen what Poly is like?" And all of these things. That is ridiculous. Do you know what it takes to organize? These, it's over 25 kids, 23 kids, there's high school kids and they organized, they collected and they felt so strongly about it that they did something. Okay, you can't barely get kids out of bed sometimes, so for them to do this, what do they have to gain? They don't have any money to gain, they have nothing to gain, so you need to believe them. We need to believe them as a community. As a woman of color who is the mother of children of color, I would hope that if my kids were ever so passionate about an injustice that they organized like these kids did, that their community would step up and listen, support and at minimum, believe them. Huff needs to go and you guys need to please support these kids and, and see what's happened at Poly. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Kristen Costley? Kristen?
Hello. Hi, I'm here to speak on the same issue of Ms. Huff. My name is Kristen Costley. I was in Ms. Huff's class in 2009 and 2011. While I never witnessed any physical abuse in her class, it was still very apparent to me that Libby Huff was unfit to teach. She ran the classroom however she felt with no rubrics or rhyme or reason to the assignments or grade she would give. I was very vocal about my issue with this, which is what landed me a D-minus for most of my junior year with her. I would take pictures of her biased ratings. Classmates would miss the same question on a multiple choice quiz, but one would receive an A and the other a B. This was ongoing theme in her class and let me, and left me feeling quite defeated. As in all my other classes, I was earning an A and in Huff's, I would never get above a D-plus. Despite doing multiple extracurricular assignments, they were always marked as zeros. If a student would score well on a midterm or a final, she would mark it as excused so it wouldn't help their grade even though they studied hard to earn that grade. I was lucky and privileged enough to have parents who cared and were able to take off work to meet with her. My mother scheduled a meeting towards the end of the year to find out why I was failing this class. When she arrived to the meeting, however, my grade had miraculously turned to a B-plus within 12 hours, wasting her time. Apart from her grading, she was always a bully. One of my classmates had missed two even days in a row and she took this opportunity to comment on her weight, saying she had probably skipped class so she wouldn't have to go to PE. She said this in front of the whole class. She said this in front of the whole class. Throughout the year, she ridiculed students who planned to go to City College, saying anyone who chooses to go to City College is a loser, slacker, and a dropout. We were required to take SATs for a grade, a grade that at the time cost seventy dollars. I didn't need to take it since I was going to LBCC. I asked if there was something else I could do instead, and she refused, so I received a zero out of five hundred for that assignment. It worked out, though, because I went to LBCC through the Promise Pathways Program, transferred to Cal State Long Beach, and got my bachelor's degree in studio art. One day in class, with no apparent lesson plan, she passed out assignments she had given to her freshmen and wanted us to grade it. I thought they'd be worksheets or quizzes, but they were journal entries. I found myself reading about a freshman who was struggling with depression. Ms. Huff hadn't even bothered to redact the students' names, they were simply at the top of the page. I felt awful and didn't read anymore. This seemed like such a terrible breach of trust, I couldn't believe she would do something so cruel. Another day, the fire alarm went off. As the class stood up, she yelled at us to sit back down, saying that we were staying inside to catch up on work. I and another student began to argue with her, saying that at this point, we didn't even know if this was just a drill or a real emergency. She said if we walked out, we would receive a zero for the day we walked out. She followed quickly behind us, knowing that if she got caught doing what she was doing, she would be in more trouble than we were. These are the stories that I remember from my time with Ms. Huff, a time that was nearly nine years ago. I wrote formal letters, as did my parents. Nothing came, nothing ever came of it. Today's students are being called liars. I did not make this up, they did not make this up. Please believe them and do the right thing and get rid of Huff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We are now at Business Items Personnel. Mr. Meyer.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. I present the following proposed actions prepared by the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resource Services, approved and recommended by the Superintendent. Appointments fifty-six, leaves of absence nine, resignations ten, retirements two, certificated personnel appointments twenty-one, in-service changes one, leave of absence twelve, resignations one, retirements three, recissions one, and I move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Instruction.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, a couple of the items that we have before us, one is in relation to federal programs that we receive funding for. I think many times it's difficult to account for what the role of our federal funding is in funding our public education. So I'd love to ask Pamela Seki to come up and talk a little bit about the areas, the categories Title I through five that we receive based on who our students are and based on our needs.
Thank you. The item that's on the instruction report tonight is our winter data collection. We submit numbers of participating students, as well as the funding allocations, to the California Department of Education. The CDE is our intermediary for the funding programs that we have from the federal government. These are supplemental programs for increasing student achievement, for targeted student populations, supplemental in that they are above and beyond in order to address the needs of these targeted student populations. We participate in Title I, which is improving basic programs. This is meeting the needs of low-income students. We have approximately forty-five schools that are Title I schools, that is, the schools that meet a threshold of seventy-five percent free and reduced lunch. Title II is supporting effective instruction. This is improving student achievement through strategies of additional professional development for our teachers and our administrators. Title III is English Learner Student Program. This is additional supplemental funds for programs above and beyond the core program for our English learners. There is a Title III Immigrant Students Program. This year, we are reporting numbers of immigrant students, but we have not seen enough growth to qualify for that funding. And finally, Title IV, which is student support and academic enrichment, that addresses additional programs for what we call well-rounded education, that could be music, supplemental art programs, supporting safe and healthy students, which would be nutrition, mental health issues, as well as effective use of technology.
Thank you, Pamela. And I just want to highlight, particularly for our community members and parents, that oftentimes, the complexities of our budgets at school districts are difficult at best, and many times, just very, very hard to understand. So I think it's important for us to get the national context of what some of our federal funding provides to our students and the implications that it has, particularly for some of our most vulnerable students. So thank you for that, Pamela.
Can I ask one question? I know, Mr. Superintendent, back in the day, when I used to come to meetings and we'd look at budgets, that Title I line item used to be significantly higher, correct? If I'm not mistaken, it was closer to forty-five million at one point?
Correct.
And so this is a decrease not on anything that we have done differently, but that more students across the nation qualify for Title I funding, and the amount of money that the federal government allocates for Title I has not changed.
It's gone up a little bit, but there's a, the biggest factor is that more students in the nation qualify, so it spreads it out.
Correct.
So that's a huge decrease from when we were talking about Title I funding even five or six years ago.
We used to at one time, and for many, many years, fund schools that had forty percent poverty, because you're allowed to do so by law, but because of the resources and the reduction, we had to go to seventy-five percent.
Thank you.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Finance Report A.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Finance Report B.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I recuse myself from participation in Finance Report B on the consent calendar. I have a potential financial interest under Government Code 1091 and eighty-seven one hundred. My husband works for a subcontractor who has done work for the payees.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The report is approved four to zero in favor with one recusal. Business Department Report.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Purchasing and Contract Report.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. Superintendent Items.
Yes, Mr. President and members of the Board, staff is recommending expulsion for student one-five-eight. This student would be expelled under Education Codes four-eight-one-five-C-four and four-eight-nine-zero-zero-point-two, and would not be allowed for re-admission until after the January twenty-seventh, January twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-one. However, Student Placement Services has made the recommendation that this student be expelled with a consideration for suspended expulsion with an opportunity to attend our GOC class.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. There is no unfinished business. We are now at new business. Adoption of initial bargaining proposals from the California School Employees Association, CSCA Chapter Two, UNIS A and B to the Long Beach Unified School District.
This is just information, so there's no vote.
Adoption of initial bargaining proposals for the California School Employees Association, CSCA Chapter Two, UNIS A and B from the Long Beach Unified School District. Another information item. Resolution zero-two-two-oh-two-zero-dash-A, non-relection of temporary certificated employees.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, could we get just a little explainer? I know this is, we do it every year, and every year, it might be confusing to some folks, so.
Sure. Mr. Zay, would you like to come up, please?
Thank you.
So Resolution number zero-two-two-oh-two-zero-A speaks to temporary certificated employees who we often refer to as having a special contract. A special contract is a contract for one year. A part of the resolution speaks to employees that we have who are temporary because they are providing leave replacements for teachers who are often on leave. It also incorporates employees who are paid through categorical funds, and so we use special contracts. And an example of that is our Head Start Program. And so each year, because they are on a special contract, we have to have this resolution to release them of their contract and then to bring them back for the subsequent year. So this is a standard resolution that we utilize each year.
Yes. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. I'd like to call on David Miranda for the next item, award of lease, lease-back contract for the Gompers K-8 School HVAC Project.
Good evening, members of the Board, Superintendent Steinhauser, executive staff, and our audience here this evening. Really, we're excited, and on behalf of facilities, to present this contract to move forward with the Gompers HVAC project. Three years ago, Assembly Bill twenty-three-sixteen was signed into law, which really amended Education Code Section seventeen-four-hundred-and-seventeen-four-oh-six, which specifically pertained to the way we solicit and award lease, lease-back construction contracts. The district then adopted a board resolution to comply with said provisions, right, in terms of awarding such contracts going forward. The district then issued a request for proposals from interested contractors and lease, lease-back firms to be able to propose on certain projects going forward. Nine firms were initially selected to this pool of pre-qualified lease, lease-back contractors. Later, a tenth firm was added to that pool. So then we moved forward into the following year, right? So in the spring of last year, spring twenty-nineteen, our department issued a request for proposals from interested firms on that pool of pre-qualified contractors. Five of those firms submitted proposals. We evaluated them based on the criteria that this new Assembly Bill called for. So that criteria included factors such as proximity of the firm, strength of the firm, strength of the specific project team that was put forward, ability of the firm to contract locally, and cost, of course, was another factor. So we evaluated the firms based on every one of those criteria measures. Really, what we're here to do this evening, and in accordance with the Assembly Bill and Education Code as amended, is recommend two-H construction as a lease, lease-back contracting firm for the Gompers K-8 HVAC project. The total contract, all-in, guaranteed project cost would be seventeen million, six-hundred-twenty-thousand, and five dollars.
Thank you. David, stay there, I'll give you the next one as well, since we vote on this one.
Move approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? The motion is approved unanimously. Resolution zero-two-two-oh-two-zero-dash-B in support of Proposition thirteen, the Public Preschool, K-12, and College Health and Safety State Bond Act of twenty-twenty. David, a little context.
Sure. So this resolution would establish Long Beach's support for this state endeavor. This is really the first of its kind in terms of a bond resolution, a state facilities bond that would include preschool, K-12, community college district, the UC system, and the Cal State system, right? So it's a fifteen-billion-dollar bond endeavor. Nine billion dollars would be set aside for pre-K through twelfth grade, really. Two billion would be for community colleges, two billion for the UC system, two billion for the Cal State system. Really, quite a bit of good information and eligible projects that are built in within the framework of Proposition thirteen. The proposition initially started as AB forty-eight, which was authored by Patrick O'Donnell of Long Beach, who, we're grateful, is very supportive of education and state facility issues as well. Certain projects that are included on this list as eligible projects would be modernization, new construction, improvements to spaces like cafeteria spaces, spaces for career tech and college and career readiness, just a host of different improvements that would really benefit Long Beach and Long Beach students.
You want to call first? Need a motion?
I'm approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, and this might be a question for Brent. So I've seen different districts and organizations endorse propositions like this. Brent, and I want to caveat it by saying I'm in full support as an individual board member for Prop thirteen. Are we, as a district or as a board, legally allowed to endorse, or is this resolution different than that?
Absolutely. The board as a whole, the board proper, always has the ability to endorse legislation. What you can't do is you can't then use district resources to urge the support or defeat of a resolution. But absolutely, make your voices heard and let everybody know how you feel about this resolution.
All right, let's start then. So yes, fully supportive of this. I think it provides an opportunity also on projects that otherwise would not be able to be funded. It's not just at one school at any given time. It benefits all students. And I think, given that we have some financial challenges in securing fundings, funding using other avenues, that this is very strongly something that would improve the lives of all students in Long Beach, better our communities in Long Beach, and in the long run, fits within the vision and mission of our district. So fully supportive of this resolution.
And I'll just add to that, that this also helps our local bond dollars go further, because it provides matching funds for projects that fit into the projects outlined in the state measure. I will say that there is a ton of misinformation going on about this right now, due to the very unfortunate nature of the recycling of our proposition numbers. We know historically that Proposition thirteen, back in nineteen seventy-seven, I believe, seventy-eight, has a huge impact on property taxes. This is not that. It has zero to do with that previous Prop thirteen. So I just want to be on the record as clear, this is a general obligation bond that is sold to fund school, construction, facilities, and modernization. That is what it does. It doesn't change anything else, but what it allows for is the state to sell bond dollars under very strict guidelines, just like we do, that have to be used for the purposes outlined in the proposition. It has zero to do with any of those other things that are floating around in meme form on most social media platforms. So I just want to point out, this will help with clean drinking water. A really important piece of this that people forget is it's going to provide disaster assistance for students and teachers. So we have thousands and tens of thousands of students across the state who have been impacted by wildfires and other natural disasters. This is one mechanism that they can begin to rebuild their schools. Some districts were completely wiped out. So when we look at this, I am in strong support of this and really hopeful that we will continue to talk about what this is and very specifically what it is not, and that it matters to Long Beach because of that COC report that we had at the beginning of our meeting. You look at the projects that we're doing, this will help us do even more with those dollars. So that's my soapbox.
I would add one more thing, Board Member Kerr, that it's not, it is not a new tax on Californians.
It is not. It does not reverse your, yes.
David, should this proposition pass, what would be our, could you tell us what our share might be?
So as of today, right, and it's a moving target based on state eligibility requirements and as buildings age and whatnot, but as of today, we would be eligible for upwards of three-hundred-and-forty-million dollars in potential state matching funds for our projects.
Thank you very much. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is approved unanimously. David, thank you very much. Okay, information items, selection of new superintendent of schools, Ruth? Anything important? Updates?
Thank you, Mr. President and Board members. There's no significant update. We're still in Phase Two of the public outreach process, and perhaps a few of you will give an update during your board report because we've been conducting our community forums.
Thank you, Ruth. Mr. President, if I may, Monday night, the twenty-fourth, will be our first town hall meeting to discuss the process of the new superintendent, is that correct?
That's the first one at Wilson and the only one at Wilson. This will be our fourth.
Fourth, very good. Thank you.
If I may add, Board Member Meyer, we also have one on Tuesday, March the third, at Renaissance High School, Thursday, March the fifth, at Prisk Elementary School Auditorium, and then nine AM Saturday, March the fourteenth, at Cabrillo.
And if I might add, no, just kidding. We will now go to report of board members, starting with our student board member, Ms. Gomez.
Good evening, Board of Education, staff, families, and friends in the Long Beach Unified School District. I'm Anise Gomez, a senior and current ASP president of the California Academy of Mathematics and Science. I'm very I'm very humbled and honored to be here once again. Last time I was here, I talked about some of our achievements at CAMHS, and today I'd like to talk about how this school has changed my life. Growing up, I wanted to be many things. I wanted to be a scientist, an architect, a carpenter, and you might be thinking, wow, a math and science school. I'm exactly where I should be. But in all honesty, I didn't know what I wanted to be at all. Being at a school with so many opportunities made me realize that I could be anything I wanted to be, and that kind of scared me. I was scared of many things, actually, scared of talking to people, scared of bringing attention to myself. Here I am. But the school has allowed me to speak my mind, do what I love, figure out what I love, and most importantly, open up a whole other realm of opportunities for myself. How did this happen exactly? Well, my freshman year, I ended up joining class board, which is a group of people who are in charge of organizing and fundraising for our prom, grad night, and other senior activities, while also in charge of uniting our class. I fell in love with planning and advertising and fundraising, but also the fact that I was able to help a lot of people and help create such a close bond between our classmates. I ended up staying after school a lot, staying up very late at night, trying to think of different ways to do things, and I loved it very much. I realized that I could do so much more than what the job entailed. I delved into advertising and tried to push the boundaries of what a simple fundraiser should be, from selling donuts on a stick to clouds on a stick, and filming and creating videos and flyers, designing apparel, which helped raise a lot of money, to the point where we're a couple thousand shy of twenty thousand dollars this year. And I just love being able to make a difference. Again, I wasn't the most outspoken person. It terrified me a lot, but I gathered the confidence somehow, and being at the school has allowed the most quiet person ever to do things like this and make a difference. I climbed the ladder of positions in class board, and I wanted to share that love I had for my class with the school. And now I am the ASP president, and I am so very grateful because I would not have this opportunity at any other school. I've learned so many soft skills, such as communication, how to work with others, but also many hard skills, such as organization, how to plan events, how to raise money, how to advertise, and more. And during this time, I was able to apply these skills to the outside world, where I was given the opportunity to intern at the Marathon Refinery in Carson, where I was able to design and produce graphics and videos during the summer for the internship program. And none of these, none of this would have been possible without the skills of GANACAMHS from ASP and class board. And now I'm hoping to become a teacher, a graphic designer, combining my love for designing, advertising, and helping people in making a difference. And again, this wouldn't be possible without CAMHS, and I just wanted to thank CAMHS for this opportunity, and thank you, Board of Education, for allowing me to be here today. Thank you.
Nice. Thank you for that very thoughtful and expressive presentation.
Thank you.
Are you a senior this year? Okay, we do have some questions that we're interested in learning about. Have you made plans to attend any particular institution, higher ed?
Not at the moment, but I've gotten into three schools so far.
Okay, okay.
Still waiting on some?
Still waiting on some.
All right.
A couple.
We're fairly confident that you won't have a problem in that regard.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here you want to say hello to?
My mom's here, my sister's here, my friend's here, yeah.
All right, okay, all right. Thank you again for that wonderful presentation. Let's start on this end. Diana?
Oh, okay. Well, let's see, since we've last met, there was the Toyota Youth Concerts at the Long Beach Symphony. I believe it was twelve thousand of our fourth and fifth graders attend over a two-day period, and they enjoyed music selections like Handel's Hallelujah and composition from Harry Potter, Double Trouble. Also featured was a ballet dancer from CAMHS. I have her name here, Julia Lee. I don't know if you know your classmate, but she danced onstage with the Long Beach Symphony. And then we also had our high school honor choir, and they did a song in Latin, they did a song in Italian, they were fabulous. So that was very fun. The theme of the concert was courage in concert. And then I wanted to mention quickly that I participated in a mealpacking event with the Assistance League. It started with a tour of the new facilities. This is a place on Spring Street. The Assistance League, Operation School Bell, they provide more than ten thousand uniforms for our students, and now they are providing meals. And so we had about five different teams, maybe. Mr. Meyer was there also, and our superintendent was there. And I know more staff members, Mr. Moskowitz, I know I'm forgetting people, but we had about five, it got competitive. I don't know if, we packed five thousand meals. What it was is a bag, and it's kind of like a soup with all the components in it in powder form. And, oh, Ms. Perez, we were on the same team, I should remember that, and I think we won, honestly, I think we won. It was so much fun. I'm putting it out there to the Assistance League, you have to invite us back. We had such a great time. And it was over so quickly. Ooh, and I think I heard that somebody was very messy with rice. That's neither here nor there. I also had the honor to attend the California School Recognition Program Award Ceremony at the Disneyland Hotel, and that included congratulatory remarks from our State Superintendent of Public Instruction, Mr. Tony Thurman. So congratulations to Alvarado, Lafayette, and Twain for their work in narrowing the achievement gap and overall improving academic performance, and being honored with twenty twenty, California distinguished, being a California distinguished school. So congratulations to those three schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Mr. Meyer?
Thank you very much. I had the pleasure of attending a PTA breakfast with Diana Craighead and Megan, and thanks to our PTA throughout Long Beach, they do such great work. I want to especially acknowledge to Leslie Darling and Linda Haynes, who were dynamite PTA folks. When I was principal at Lakewood back in nineteen ninety-eight, and they're still going strong, so thank you very much to those two ladies. The Wilson Orchestra is trying to generate funds to finance the fact that they've been invited to Carnegie Hall again. Two thousand dollars per student is what it's going to cost. So if you would like to make a donation, tax-free, to the Wilson High Orchestra, you may do so by addressing it to the music program at Wilson High School. They would deeply appreciate that. I had the pleasure of dropping by Beach High School on Tuesday, and I want to compliment Troy Bennett, the great job that he does. I'm going to shed a little secret about Troy, I hope he doesn't mind, but he said, you know, Mr. Meyer, I feel a sense of anxiety every time I come to work. I just want to do such a good job. And I told Troy, I said, Troy, you're doing a great job, and the persona that you exude before your students, I mean, you just don't know the tremendous impact you have on them, so keep up the good work. Thanks, Troy. Let's see here. I guess that's about it. Thanks, Dr. Williams.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes, I have three items to report on. The first is one that I've mentioned during my board report at previous meetings. We have a U.S. Census that's our constitutional duty to do every ten years. This year's census date is April first, and it has serious policy and funding implications in the areas of health, education, the economy, health, and the environment, among many others. But in particular, for our educational endeavor as a nation. And it behooves us to have an accurate and complete count. So what does that mean? That means every single person that's physically in the United States on April first should and must get counted. And so our district is taking a very active role in partnership with the City of Long Beach, with Cal State Long Beach, with Long Beach City College, to assure that we have an accurate and complete count, particularly for what are called hard-to-count populations, which includes students, which includes children, zero to five, which includes households where English is not the first language spoken, which includes our senior communities, which includes our LGBTQ community members, which includes our immigrant communities, which includes renters, low-income communities. It was mentioned earlier that at forty-five of our schools, seventy-five percent of the students at least are on free and reduced lunch. So it has serious implications for the communities that we serve, for our students and their families. And the only way to secure funding and to impact policies that impact our everyday lives is to assure an accurate and complete count. So I want to continue to encourage everyone, this is the first time in the census history that it can be completed online, beginning March twelfth. It's nine questions, it shouldn't take more than ten minutes. Everyone should be able to answer the questions. It'll be in twelve languages online. In addition, there is support for fifty-five additional languages, so that we make sure and we complete that census. And we'll have different kiosks across our city where folks, if they don't have access to a computer or the internet, can walk right up and fill out and complete the census online. So that's my first item. My second item is, and several of us have shared this, my appreciation for everyone that comes in during public comment. We listen, we're very serious listeners, and we take your comments into account in our decision-makings. So whether it be today's comments or any other comments that are made, when there are serious issues that require investigations, we also are very serious and thorough in those investigations. So I just want to thank the members of our community that come during public comment and reassure you that we do listen and that it informs our recommendations and decisions on our end. And kind of in line with the previous two items, we have elections coming up next month that impact, again, the everyday lives of everyone. So I'm not going to tell you how to vote, who to vote for, but encourage you to vote, right? I want to thank two members of our board here for their many years of service. We will have two seats up, March primary, March third, our Super Tuesday, right? But this, again, along with the search for a superintendent, is part of our civic responsibility. We can criticize, we can complain, and we listen to those criticisms and to those complaints, but one way to actively impact our decision-making processes is by participating. And if you're under eighteen or you are ineligible to vote, you can still participate, you can still volunteer, you can still educate, you can still motivate, you can still encourage others that are eligible to vote, to participate in our democracy, with a big D there. So I just want to remind everyone that we are one week away from March, two Tuesdays away from elections, and you heard about one of the propositions that our board is supporting. We encourage everyone to fully activate our civic rights and our civic duties and participate in our democracy.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Kerr?
Yes, thank you. On the note of the census, I know, Dr. Baker, you've been leading up some of that work. Perhaps in a upcoming meeting, during, next meeting, during the staff report, we'll hear a little bit more about opportunities and the ways that the district is partnering with all those community agencies very specifically, and how you might be able to be a part of helping us count better. So, thank you. It's great to know. I wanted to, so I want to brag on my North Long Beach community a bit. So we had our forum to talk about qualities we're looking for in the next superintendent, and we had it at Jordan High School in the community room on Tuesday night, and we had a great turnout and a really robust conversation. We actually used, for those of you who have been or watched, we used our entire ninety minutes, right up to the end, of really thoughtful and engaged discussion about who we are, who we want to be, who we've been, how we can be better, and what we're excited about, and really how we belong to each other and are in relationship, and that's how we move forward. So I want to thank our students, we had some little ones there, we had families, we had teachers, we had staff members, we had community members who live in the area. I want to thank them for coming out and sharing, I mean, that really thoughtful and engaging conversation. So we're throwing the gauntlet for the rest of you who have forums coming up, and hopefully you will have equally engaging information days with your community. And also, if you haven't been and you live in the north, you can still go to the other ones as well. And I want to echo Dr. Benitez's comments and express my gratitude for those who come to not only speak to us here, but who text message, who email, who are deeply concerned or excited about who we are and what's going on. And when you share that with us, it helps us do our job better, it helps us work as a team in this room to serve students well. So I will echo that we hear you, and I'm grateful that you continue to reach out to us and trust us with information. So thank you for all of that. And then I will end with an apology to Lindberg. So at least once a year, it's usually only once, I usually have one big calendar fail, and this was it. They had their pasta dinner last Thursday night, and I had it on my calendar for last Wednesday night. And unfortunately, I could not go because I was at an event at Cal State Long Beach with Dr. Connolly and Mayor Garcia. So Lindberg, I'm coming at you with cookies or cupcakes or something, but I did see the social media of your wonderful community engagement night with your families and your pasta dinner, so thank you for that great work.
Okay, thank you so much, Megan. First and foremost, I want to just congratulate my fellow board member, John Meyer, who received the Impact Award awarded by the city prosecutor, Doug Halbert. And that award was all about the, what they attribute to the reduction in student crime in the city by the work of this board. And so that award really had, makes, states a lot of significance for how the city prosecutor views our work as a school district in reducing crime in the city. So congratulations, John.
Well, let me interrupt and say that you also received that Impact Award, and I really rode in on your coattails, Dr. Williams, you do such good work, so thank you.
Thank you, John. I want to also comment on the Toyota Symphony because the conductor of the symphony was very personable in coming out to meet with us and chat with us about the music that was being performed, how the kids would interact with that music, and what it meant for the kids to be there. He was very personable in spending a lot of time with us, just walking us through what would occur in terms of the music, and it was an outstanding performance, and our kids did very well. And also, I believe our choir, our school choir, participated in that symphony as well, and they did a fantastic job. I have a letter here that I received from Jen Webb in reference to one of our teachers. Jen represents the Southern California School Band and Orchestra Association, SC SBOA, and she writes, Dear Dr. Williams, on behalf of the Southern California School Band and Orchestra Association, I want to congratulate Naomi Norwick and your school district on the recognition she received Saturday, January eighteen, twenty twenty. I did confirm with Chris before I read this letter that she was, in fact, one of our teachers. What school is she at, Chris? Okay, you don't, I won't hold you for that one. Where? He was, okay. She received the prestigious Outstanding Veteran Music Educator Award. Her nomination states, Naomi Norwick has been a, has had a distinguished career as a middle school band and orchestra teacher. She's dedicated to music education and the SC SBOA. Naomi served on the SC BOA board as Vice President of String Education, VP of Middle School Honor Groups, and VP of Elementary and Middle Schools. Naomi hosted solo and ensemble festivals and presented at multiple conferences. Additionally, she managed the SC SBOA Junior High School, Middle School Honor Orchestras, and served as an auditioner and section coach. In twenty thirteen, Naomi was honored to conduct the SC SBOA Honor Orchestra. SC SBOA is the largest professional organization serving music teachers in eleven southern counties of California. It serves over one thousand schools in the Southern California region, affecting over one hundred thousand students in instrumental music, with over twelve hundred and fifty members. So it's congratulations to Ms. Norwick for this outstanding honor. And let's see, that is it. So superintendent?
Yes, before you leave...
Yes, before you leave, we want to take your picture with the board, so just saying, Dr. Camarino will be doing that. So, and I just have two items. One, I'm going to remind everybody that this Saturday is the last Kindergarten Festival at Bercham. We've had great attendance, and so we want to remind our families, rain or shine, it's supposed to rain Saturday, so rain or shine, it will continue to go on. So it's a wonderful opportunity for all of our families to go to. So, and as we've, many of you know, we've had some of our parents come to talk about a situation in Building Two at Fremont and some concerns regarding some mold spores, excuse me. And so what we've done, and we've had several meetings at the school, later tonight, I will be sending a letter to the staff at Fremont and to the families at Fremont that, beginning on March second, the fourth and fifth graders who are in, which are five classrooms, who are in Building, what we call Building Two, will be spending the rest of their academic year at Lowell and Rogers. We're doing this out of an abundance of caution because of lingering concerns that individuals have. Our commissioned licensed environmental specialists have deemed that the school and the building are safe, but because of these concerns, we want to start remediation, which was going to take place later in June with part of the Measure E project, sooner. So there will be a meeting for parents next Monday at six-thirty in the auditorium. We will be providing bus transportation for our students and a lot of support for our teachers and staff to make a smooth transition. So keep them in your thoughts as they find out this information tonight and tomorrow, because this is happening rather quickly.
Thank you, Chris. We are now at announcements.
Yes, Dr. Williams, maybe we can take a clip of this, Ruth, for our superintendent's forums, because I really appreciated the calls in Spanish in that announcing the selection process.
I was just going to remind folks about the Kinderfest at Bercham as well, but also Polly has their musical happening this weekend, so I think opening night might be tonight and then Friday, and two on Saturday. So head on out to Polly to see Hairspray.
Also tonight is the Student Art Show at the JCC. The awards ceremony starts at six-thirty, but the student art will still be on display for one more week, and that's always fabulous. So if you have a chance, go see the student art at the JCC.
Also tomorrow, the African-American Cultural Center will be hosting a presentation at the EduCare facility to provide a overview of what this project, this program is all about. We're basically having folks there who can help provide support for infrastructure and other forms of support. Dr. Conley, Dr. Reagan Romali, Steve Goodling, our superintendent, Chris Steinhouser. We've invited Mayor Garcia and other city officials. That will be at nine o'clock tomorrow, and if there are staff from the district who would like to attend, then we welcome you. But again, this is to provide an overview of what this project entails and for these folks, as, looking at these folks as honorary board members who can provide resource, support for this project. Again, it's at nine a.m. at the EduCare facility on, at Barden Elementary School. That is it. Entertaining the motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned. Student board member?